Well, good morning. My name is Sam Brent Towne, Marion County Commissioner. We are in a different place this morning. Hubbard City Hall, 3720 Second Street in Hubbard. I want to welcome everybody and we look forward to an interesting meeting and to learn a few things. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we start our meetings too with public comment and see some names that have signed up that will also be making presentations, so I'll buy them. And I'm not sure about this one. Marnie Barwell, are you part of a presentation?
No, I'm here, but I wasn't told I was part of the presentation, sorry.
All right. Well, let me just open it up. I see some people that haven't signed up. If anybody, we came here to hear from you, so I hope someone, maybe a mayor, maybe a school, anyone that would like to tell us anything. Is there anybody? Please come up and I don't know quite where we get set up, I guess, at a microphone there.
Oh, come up there.
Sit down.
Hi, my name is Bill Grout. I'm the numerous hats, I'm the mayor of Aurora. I am also on the North Marion School Board. I chair the Oregon FBLA for all seventy-one, seventy-two high schools in the state and I do have a day job. So I just wanted to quickly say, I really appreciate you guys coming up to the North County and holding a meeting up here so we can stay abreast of all the issues going on. We do follow the legislature session and what you guys are doing quite avidly and really appreciate all the support that you give us, especially on the transportation stuff that's been going on recently is wildly helpful and really makes our community feel that we're connected. And sometimes, like when I get jury duty, it's a long way to come down to Salem for jury duty and things and you kind of get feeling disconnected, so really appreciate and wanted to thank you guys for coming up here again. I know last time you came up to the, to the school district and we had a nice meeting there and just keep on coming up this way and making us feel welcome and we love having, welcoming you here. Thank you.
Bill, before you leave, just a little comment or two. And I don't know what bill number it is, but I saw one last night where there's a bill to, how would I say that, to, for civics classes. And I just wondered if you have any comments. I know I do. I really don't think, even my own family, they don't understand what, how this works and who local government is and I think it'd be wonderful.
Yeah, it's a struggle for me, especially as the, as the president of Oregon FBLA, when bills like that come along, to be honest with you. And just, you know, we love that and the intent, you know, the bold letter, part of that, of all the bills that go through the Education Committee are wildly exciting, especially like things like Measure ninety-eight, but then you start reading down past the second paragraph and you realize there's, there's a lot of issues with this that are not well-understood.
Okay, I didn't, I saw the idea.
But same thing on that, on that bill too. So we, we love that stuff and we do think that these kinds of things are there, but they really should be, in my opinion, as a school board member, should be handled at the districts, kind of thing, and not be legislated out of Salem, in my opinion. Same thing with like FBLA, they're trying to do CTE stuff and we have a good balance running right now where we, between the six or seven CTSOs, we service close to eight thousand kids in the state, you know, and we work collaboratively. It's kind of a good balance right now, trying to get the CTE stuff rolling and to get it legislated out of Salem, kind of, we worry, it can just break things.
I'll ask Boyd the same question. Fisher Cameron and I were at Chaballa last week and they had some things on the whiteboard and talked about federal government, state government, tribal government, cities, but the county was missing, so I'm thinking, how around did I meet?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, certainly from the county's point of view, we were just talking with the SEDCor team, we're, I'm meeting with Charles Lee and, you know, we have the stuff where we can really push a Marion County solution for CTE with private-public partnerships and the CTE stuff with Salem and they have a huge foundation, is great. I'm rolling up a new company at the Aurora Airport to teach aviation to high school kids. You know, we talked over a little bit with Julie Parrish, as you know, World of Speed is there, so we're getting all these things where a lot of companies and people like me are setting up places to teach kids these kinds of skills with local business money and we need to coordinate that and we really, kind of talking with SEDCor and I'm talking to you and I wasn't intending on saying this, but I'll say it now. If we can get a Marion County program where we're all collaborating, and what I told Charles Lee was, I don't need their money, you know, I don't need to tap into their things. What I would like to do is just not all us have to create student contracts, you know, and create insurance and maybe we can get a board insurance pool, you know, just to collaborate and work together and set up different things. For like me, Charles Lee and I are getting along because I'm in aviation, he doesn't cover aviation at CTEC. You know, we have a lot of the same skills, but we're, we're just, by spreading it around, we can make Marion County one of the best places for teaching kids how to really have good life skills and careers as, in a total package, if we all collaborate together and it would begin with you guys just supporting. So that wasn't my intent to pitch that here, but I just throw that down.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's interesting that you brought it up, Bill, because yesterday we're going through our, we're interviewing for an economic development director position and one of the questions that one of the candidates asked is, how are we doing on workforce development? And I'm not going to say on the record what I said there, but I think that's a real opportunity for us to work with, within Marion County, with SEDCor, because the organizations, in my opinion, that are set up to do it aren't doing it. And I think the schools are a really good spot and private businesses are a really good spot to try to coordinate that. So maybe we can help.
And this, that silver tsunami is being affected to almost every industry in our county, you know, just talking about our county.
It's gone. It's gone.
You know, and even, even, I'll say in leadership, you know, in political leadership, we need to start bringing in younger people, not saying to you, but because I'm, we're all the same age here, but, you know, and that kind of stuff, of just bringing civics into this, you know, the lower age brackets is important. Back to your original question, because we seem to have lost it a bit and that needs to come back. So, but as far as career life skills, ODE is helping out quite a bit with my CTSO work. FBLA is the largest one outside of FFA, which kind of separates themselves off and doesn't work with the other six CTSOs, but ODE is supporting us. So for example, they just gave our, FBLA a twenty-two thousand dollar grant. We're going to have thirty teachers at Portland State University with my alma mater and we're going to bring them in and have them a day of training on what an ideal model incoming freshman looks like, what kind of skills they need to be successful coming into college, what leadership tools are available, new modern leadership tools and teaching kids, students, kind of things. And so these are great things that we're doing and getting kids prepared for life. And well, let's make Marion County a real model for the state. I would love that, Gray. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Anyone else like opportunity?
Good morning. I'm Rick Olmstead. I'm the mayor of Donald. I wanted to inform you that last night our city council adopted a memorandum of understanding between the city of Donald and GK Machine Incorporated for urban growth boundary expansion study. GK Machine is our largest employer with almost two hundred people and they're finding it very difficult when they attract people to make, to keep the people there because there's not housing available in the local area. People have very long commutes and they make the disemployment decision to move to another firm. So the, this is the first step in allowing an urban growth boundary expansion and we were the grateful recipients of a grant from Marion County that allows us to do this, to work with the COG and work with the planner. And we're grateful for that, that grant to allow us to do this when otherwise we might not have been able to afford the process. Thank you.
How long will that take?
We envision, the memorandum lays out that it will be almost a year because it involves many meetings, public input, a lot of process to get to, and all it's going to do is tell us, it looks out a half mile from the current UGB and it just determines where the best opportunity for, for expansion would be. And we have almost, there's no limit. We have our lagoons on one side of town, otherwise it's farmland. So it's, we have no idea where the final, this is the best place will be. That's why this study is so important. So hopefully it will lead to, to more, more housing for people in, in North Marion County and that will be a benefit for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Just for people in the, in the audience, Mayor, thank you for sharing that grant. Our Economic Development Advisory Board looks at those community grants, makes recommendations to us as the Board of Commissioners to, to fund those types of things and it's a real opportunity, the lottery dollars that we get from the state lottery that we're able to turn around into those communities for benefits like that. So thanks for sharing that today.
All right, anyone else? I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to our presentations and again, learn some more about Hubbard and the area here in North Marion County. The first is Angie Weecroft, Council President. Angie, excuse me for not introducing myself, but welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to your own place.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Angie Weecroft and I am Council President. Unfortunately, Madam Mayor couldn't be here today, so I'm taking her place. I'll talk a little bit and then I'll read a little bit about what she sent me, what she would like to pass on to you. I would like to just give you a little tiny snippet of Hubbard history and again, welcome you. So in eighteen forty-eight, the Hubbard family came to Hubbard and purchased four hundred acres along Mill Creek in eighteen seventies. Like many of the cities near it, Hubbard flourished along the rail line. With eighteen seventy-one being the first train stop and being a place for grain stops and travelers and the city was finally incorporated in eighteen ninety-one. And this building that you're sitting here in was the army, was the armory. I want to touch a little bit on the great things in our city, brag about our city a little bit and you'll later hear different members of the departments and the people in a little bit, more detail, talk about those things, but I just love the city, so I want to brag on them a little bit. Hubbard is such a great place because it is right in the middle of Portland and Salem. So it is just a place for people to come and live because they can get to Portland or to Salem. So we are growing. We have added just recently a new subdivision and we will be in the summertime adding another subdivision and we're really excited about that and excited about our growth. So that's, that's a great thing for Hubbard. Our police department is amazing. They're solving cases that, we just learned about a case that they solved last night, some burglaries that were going on from, I think, the coast to the Cascades and our police department worked on it and made some arrests. We're just so proud of them. In two thousand sixteen, we were named Oregon's safest city. In two thousand fifteen, we were Oregon's second safest city. So we're, I'm just so proud of the work that they've been doing. Unfortunately, our police chief had to retire because of some personal issues, so we're just in the process right now of hiring a new chief. We lost one police officer also due to retirement, so after we get our new police chief in, then we're going to also work on some hiring some new police officers. So that's been a little tough for the officers that we do have, but we're working on rebuilding that. We have just amazing city staff. Our Public Works is amazing. Vicki, who runs our city administration, is amazing and then we have Carrie, who runs our finance, who came in with a, kind of a little bit of a mess on her hands and has done just such an amazing job for us, getting that back in, you know, working on our budget and I'm so proud of our city and what they're doing. So just, our school district is a little bit different with Donald, Aurora and Hubbard melding into, to one school district and I don't think that you see that too often, so it is a little bit of a different situation, which just is great because you're bringing these three cities in and just such diversity and a great place to be. So many of the people that are in this city also grew up here and choose to bring their families back here, which I did. I grew up here and my father also grew up here, so my kids are here, so I'm a third generation, so I'll be done bragging about our wonderful city now. We have a new mayor and we're working on reinvigorating our city. We're working on attracting and retaining businesses, which as you know, being a small city, it's a little bit tough because we're not right there on I-5, so people aren't, you know, coming, so it is a little bit harder to get businesses to come, so we are working really hard on doing that. Working on improving our infrastructure, prioritizing our public safety and making it a willing partner to our surrounding cities and you also as the county. We're really, really grateful to Marion County. As I said before, with our police department doing our search, our intern chief, police chief Lieutenant Gary Adcock on loan from Marion County Sheriff's Office, he's just done such an amazing job. He's gone in, kind of looked things over, helped us out, looking at our programs, looking at what we're doing, has, you know, worked on implementing some stuff. He's getting along with our officers so, so great. So we just really appreciate his help and having him be on loan for us, so thank you for that. Here's some projects that we're working on. We're working on some business retention and expansion with SEDCor. We're restructuring our internal departments for efficiency, updating our development codes, pursuing a downtown revitalization project, a new restaurant project for Riveness Park, which we approved last night. So again, Public Works, as I said, that's a big undertaking for them and they've done a great job on working that for us. New housing developments, as I said again. Rebuilding our public safety capacity and our stormwater drainage plan, which we also talked about last night, which, you know, everybody. So I once again want to thank you for coming and hearing about our city and, and taking your time, your busy time out of your day to, to come and visit Marion, you know, upper, our little area of Marion County and, and learning about Hubbard and coming and visiting us today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Counselor. Thank you for being here today. Were you able to, or am it in your council or your city, able to come to the Rural Economic Development Conference that we hold in Salem?
I'm not sure if Mayor Estes came to that or not.
Okay. The other thing I would say is, as you're doing like your park restrooms and those types of things, make sure that you're looking at our community grants.
Okay. And I know that we do, we do look hard on that. Melinda, who will speak to you later, is, works very hard on doing those things and she's just, I mean, we're so blessed here to have such a great staff and she does work very hard on that.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for your service on the city council.
Thank you.
And I forgot to say that to the, the two mayors that were here. Thank you for your public service as well.
Thank you. Thank you again.
And you bring up a couple little thoughts, questions. So you talked about quite a bit of growth and I was a former mayor, so I know usually means water sewer problems, got plenty of capacity or what are the issues there?
I think Melinda can probably speak to you better, not when she comes to, to speak to you better.
And here's one that you might like, a local debate. I grew up just outside, by Crosby Road. It was always Ravine's Market. So let's get to the bottom of that. Does Riveness in the town?
Yes.
All right. I'll try to correct myself.
Yes, yes. As long as I've been here, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Steve Brewer, Hubbard Fire District. Is he here? Nope.
Can I just talk on his, his point then? I didn't, I didn't mention the fire department, I kind of left that out because he's, I thought he was going to be here, but he's also doing such a good job since he's been here and I don't know if you've read any of the articles that have been in the paper recently about our fire department, but they're, for our insurance rate that used to, I don't know how much you know about it and I don't know a whole lot about it, but I just read an article in the Independent about it, that we used to be rated at an eight and we're hopefully going to be rated at a four now and that's a tremendous, just impressive job for him. And I don't know how much you know about the Hubbard Hot Festival, but it's just been very important to our city and we didn't have it last year due to some factors and happy to say that we will be having that again this year and so our town is just really happy to have that again and, and due to him and the other fire members and the fire board so, and the members of the fire department. And I don't have the specific numbers, which I wish that he was here to give you, but the volunteers and the work that he is doing to bring in the volunteers, it's, it's just incredible how much that is growing and what he's done to increase that and there are many young people. And I just wanted to add, which I'm, I'm sure that our superintendent, but my husband actually attended as we're talking about young people, so in case he doesn't mention it, I just want to mention really quickly, held a career fair yesterday and my husband was one of the people that attended that. And he said that he thought that they might have had about fifty people come in and talk there. So the school is doing amazing things to, which I was just so impressed by. So the school district is doing amazing things to try to bring young people and to get them jobs and to talk about, and he's in construction safety. So I really applaud the city to, for, or the school district to work hard to get young people involved and to, to, you know, bring them looking forward to career. So, so thank you so much that he was just really happy and impressed and, and that just was really great. So, so that's just a little piece of the fire department, so thank you.
I wish we could admit it.
I wish so, thank you.
Here's one I met, Commander Eric Ladd, Marion County Sheriff's Office. So you're not going to be signing up for this police job here in Hubbard, is that what you're here for?
Sir, sir, it's a great city. I'm happy at the sheriff's office right now. Right now. How'd I do it, guy? Mr. Scloria and John, thank you for having me. Again, for the record, my name is Eric Ladd. I'm the Enforcement Division Commander for the Marion County Sheriff's Office and I'm here today for Jerry Adcock, who is out at training and he is presently the interim chief here at City Hubbard. An opportunity, we had the honor of providing the service to the City of Hubbard. I just want to point out, and it was mentioned, you kind of stole most of my stuff.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Officers Bentley and Anderson, they truly embody the, the mission statement here of enhancing the safety and livability of the people of our community through education and enforcement, whether it's solving crime, which was some local burglaries here that have a nexus between the coast and the Cascade Range, or being in the park. If you had an opportunity to see Facebook, it was Officer Bentley was just in the park making connections with the community when a couple of kids collided on a swing set and he was there to scoop up one of the, one of the children and kind of comfort them until their parents could come over and pick them up. And it's just great officers here in the city. I may have mentioned last night that I might try and recruit a couple of them, both of them. So.
I don't think so.
That was pointed out too. I think I might have been, I might have been threatened with that yesterday, but again, just great officers here. The Officer Bentley does work with our K-9 program, works with Jason Bernards with their K-9 program here and then Marion County's. Problem solving that Jerry's been working on, some of those, some of the issues and one that's come up is the radar trailer that they do have here in town. We've offered the radar trailer that the sheriff's office has to be brought up here. Our extensive from code enforcement could bring our radar trailer up, can be used until they can get theirs up and running. So some of those things are things that Jerry is able to make those connections and problem solve issues. He's been working with their city attorney on the chief's process in terms of scoring and submitting those to the council and to the, to the mayor. They've recently completed their medical aid and response policy, which is part of their collective bargaining agreement, so which is an outstanding opportunity. And he's been working with Chief Brewer, I wish he could be here today. They've been going from business to business and, and making those partnerships in the community, which we know that are so important. I don't have much more than that. I appreciate Councilman speaking so highly and again, as the city moves through its process to determine its chief, move forward in the future, we just appreciate the opportunity to be here and help out.
I have one if no one does. It's just a comment that I had, just listening to both of you talk, we think we're kind of helping out and the city's getting, you know, some bridge, but it's really such an opportunity to embed and make relationships that, that will probably be important as time goes on, that you wouldn't have that opportunity if, if, what's his official title, Chief Adcock?
I believe it's interim, I believe it's interim chief Adcock.
By being here, you can see that building and it's always good.
It's, it's been a great opportunity. Our traffic folks have been here in town. One of the things that Jerry saw was a, a need for some traffic OT. Obviously, we've had those conversations on, over by the St. Paul-Donald area, so we use some of those traffic dollars on this ninety-nine corridor that impacts the City of Hubbard. We know that they have traffic issues as well, so. Thank you.
Met this person, Josie Hyde, North Marion County Community Library Treasurer.
Yes. I'm going to hand out some information. So hi, I'm Josie Hyde and I am the treasurer for North Marion Community Library Association. And the reason I got involved is I, my family moved to Aurora in the summer of two thousand twelve and the first thing I wanted was a library card. And I asked my neighbor, there's no library in North Marion County. And so I thought, well, I'll just go get a Canby library card. And I went in to do that and they were going to charge me eighty-five dollars a year for a library card, which, being Scotch background, I wasn't going to do. So shortly after that, I went to an event at Legion Hall in Aurora and there was a booth set up by several women that were trying to start a library in North Marion County. So I quickly volunteered to help. And we did a lot of groundwork to get a library open. We had to get five oh one C-three status. We had to find a, a place to have it. We had to get books. We had to get our name through the state and all those things, which we did. Beginning of two thousand fourteen, one of the local churches donated a hundred square feet in the basement of their church. And so we managed to buy some bookshelves that were surplus at one of the Portland libraries. We hired the shop class at the North Marion Community High School and they built us the other shelves that we needed. Most of them are on wheels, so we can move them in and out and we can use more than the hundred square feet that we have allocated when we're open. We just have to put them away for the church to be able to use that area when we're not open. And so that worked out really well. And we opened in August of two thousand fourteen. And presently, we have over ten thousand books. We've issued over five hundred library cards. We're still kind of hidden in the basement of a church, which isn't the most ideal situation, but we're able, we've, because of our fundraisers and donations that we've gotten from generous people in the community, we have a battle of the books every year, which is the books that the kids in, I think it's the sixth and eighth grades have to read in their school program. We buy all the top sellers on Amazon, the top five every month. We have a board of directors of nine members and in the future, we'd really like to be able to expand and increase our program. Our main difficulty is getting the word out that we're there and the hours that we can be open because it's all volunteer. We've taken no money from anybody but what we've earned in our, in our fundraisers, so that's.
You've gone a long ways in three years, it sounds like.
We have, yeah.
Bursting at the seams.
Yeah, and, and we've. Yeah, and and we've um talked with the school district about maybe ha- having room at the school area, you know, out in that area. We've also toyed with the idea of moving to Hubbard because there's more children in Hubbard than in Aurora. Aurora's more of an older community of of people. And we'd like to have the kids more, and we have Spanish books, we have English books, of course. So, yeah.
Wonderful, thank you, Commissioner.
So what does it take to go to step up to be part of the interlibrary loan program? I saw on your flyer that that's one of the goals that you have.
You have to be open for three years, I, what I understand. And and we're not a hundred percent we want, sure we wanna do that. But um we could become part of the chamacada system if we, if, I don't know all the steps. I'm sorry. But we do have people looking into it, you know, in our group.
Thank you so much and thanks for all you do. And I just met her, and I'll probably say this wrong, Linda Klosinski, Marion County, Marion E. Carl, Veterans Memorial Secretary Treasurer and founder.
You did very well. That was the brief form, but it it.
That was the what?
That's the brief form of saying our last name, but some of our relatives still use that, so it's fine. Thank you for inviting me to come today, welcome to Hubbard too. We actually, I, well, first of all, I'd like to thank uh, you know, you to, for asking me to come and talk about our veterans memorial. I'm always very proud and and honored to tell the people how our Hubbard people feel about the veterans, how they care about them. And if any of you have done service in the military, I'd like to thank you for your service too. My name is Linda Klosinski. Uh I've lived here since nineteen seventy-eight. We've raised our family here. And I actually became more involved with the city as a volunteer uh in two thousand six. The mayor at that time asked me if I would be in charge of upgrading our little parks here, our neighborhood parks. And that was a hard decision for me. Uh I was retired at the time, but at the same time, I thought that's a big responsibility. Cause I've seen the parks and they really need a lot of work. But I said I would take it on. My husband was busy with other things in the city and he was retired too. But anyway, we we put in three neighborhood parks, upgraded them. And in twenty-ten, I had nothing else to do. And uh we had got the parks done, so this is where the memorial came in to effect. I am presently secretary of uh the Marion E. Carl Veterans Memorial. We started our organization in twenty-eleven under the sponsorship of Hubbard Parks Improvement Committee. And uh in twenty-sixteen, we kinda branched away from them and obtained our own nonprofit status. And here we are now. So um we have seven board of directors, uh including uh myself as secretary treasurer and Doug Cowley. And he is the president. And I'd like for him to stand up for recognition because he has done a lot of work too. And uh all of us are volunteers, we're dedicated volunteers and we love what we do. We do all the maintenance uh and repairs that need to be done. Uh we have received a lot of donations, you know, to help us out, so. And we've had fundraisers and and uh it it's been a lot of work, but we have collected money to do it. And none of it came out of our pockets or the city's purse either, so. One of the board of directors is a a great niece of Marion E. Carl. And her and her husband are part of of our organization. And actually, the whole Carl family is pretty much uh active in in the memorial, so it's great to have them. A little bit of history about Marion E. Carl. I don't know if you folks have read a lot about him, but he is our Hebra. And that is why we wanted to name this memorial in memory of him. Not only just him, but also honor all the veterans at the same time. And he lived on a farm just east of Hubbard here out in the country. He was born and raised there. And he went on to college after he attended school here uh at Oregon State College and got a degree in engineering. And he was part of the ROTC program at that time at the college too. And then he went on to start his military career. He started with the Marine Corps. Uh he was one of the first ace pilot fighters, if I'm saying that right. There's there's a lot of achievements he has done during his time. He had thirty-four years' service in the military, received a lot of awards and achievements. And uh he um actually has a lot of memorials, you know, uh ra- out and about uh for him. And he's been indoctrinated into many hall of fames in the museums. He actually uh met uh his wife while he was in the military and they got married. And and they have two children and both children are still alive. And uh one, I think one's in California, the other's in New York. And he, his wife he met in in New York, he married a model that lived there and worked. And uh after his thirty-four years in the military, he retired and they moved to uh another farm out in Roseburg. And at the age of eighty-two, that's where his life was taken from him. He stepped between him, uh between the intruder and his wife and took the shot. And so he died saving his wife. And to me, that's just really ironic, because he served so many years in the military on all kinds of other countries. And here's where he met his death. But anyway, he uh was buried at the Arlington National Cemetery with full military honors. And so that is why we named the memorial after him. So um. The monument, it started in twenty-ten as a vision. My husband and I had the vision and we went before city council. We got uh their approval to use some of their property. It's called the Whifferwill Greenway. And it's located just as you go out of, out of town here uh off of D Street. And uh anyway, uh we got their approval, we got the approval of the family to use his name. And so we started getting getting quotes and so I could get an estimate. And I came up with an estimate and got the lowest bidder. And um I got some of my experience because I used to work for a general contractor. So that really came in handy uh to kind of proceed. But anyway, we got their construction schedule and took it before city council and and we started in twenty-eleven. Uh we completed the memorial in twenty-twelve and we had a um dedication with lots of people and music and the Oregon City ROTC uh junior, uh the junior ROTC color guard helped us with raising and retiring flags. So um we had refreshments, it was, it was just wonderful. We had probably a hundred people there or more. And since then, we've also had three different Veterans Day ceremonies there in the same crowds. We always have plenty of people that come and want to honor the veterans. That was phase one, getting that done. And we went into phase two after that, and that's the parking lot. And same thing, we got the quotes uh and started and got completed in, we started in twenty-thirteen and finished in twenty-fourteen. We uh really tried to stay with close to our estimates, but we kinda went over sometimes. We got grants. We had one uh group of of people who who uh they're from local around here and they had a a foundation. And we never had to hurt for a grant. They were just so willing to help us in all our parks and the memorial too and the parking lot. So we felt really privileged to do that. Just, just a little bit um on on the project, I I couldn't have done it without, you know, the support of the community. And especially the support and help of my husband Ken, because it meant a lot to him to have the memorial in. And so he was always there. We had uh the Public Works Department helping us too and making sure we did everything right. And uh so it became kind of a community effort. It's in a perfect location here in Hubbard. It's kind of a, it's in Whifferwill Greenway and there's never been anything there. And so we thought that's a perfect place to put it. It's kind of a a quiet, peaceful, serene area. And uh we, we thought that was the best place for it. And so we, we feel like, you know, people passing by, they're, they put in a sidewalk for us too. And so, you know, a lot of walkers go by there and there's a place for them to sit and and just rest. Just a a little comedy, a little bit. There was a resident that lived here in Hubbard and he didn't live far from the memorial, but he loved that that memorial. And before, you know, a few months before he passed away, he decided to go for a walk in the middle of the night. And he just went down there in his underwear and sat down on the bench and just stayed there until the police saw him there and uh brought him back to his life. He didn't have Alzheimer's, he just wanted to be there. And he didn't wanna wake up anybody, I guess, so he just went down. So um you might ask, you know, what was our goal uh on our dedication invitation? We wrote our goal down for everyone. And I'd like to read it to you. It says, "Our goal is not only to honor our military personnel who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation, but to honor all veterans, living and deceased, who have donned the uniforms of the United States of America." And that is really how we feel about it. We, we feel like even the responders, the police, the fire department, that's their place too. We, we have sold over three hundred and eighty-seven engraved bricks and we have about three hundred left that we can do. Before you go, I'd like for you to read some of the information I brought. And there's brochures if you wanna order a brick. And and I'd love to have you go over and see the site. Hopefully, it wouldn't be real nasty out. And you just go straight down here to a block and go eight blocks west and you can't miss it if you go over the track. So anyway, that's, that's my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I already planned, I'll swing by, but thank you and thanks for all you do. And if you'd like to find somebody like you to turn loose in our county parks.
Oh dear.
Running out of things to do.
Thank you very much.
All right. Melinda Olinger, Hubbard Public Works Emergency Management. Good morning.
Morning. Um and thank you uh so much for the opportunity to be here today and share some information on our city's emergency management program and some of our projects that we've got either pending and or that we're working on currently uh here in Hubbard. Um just a little quick heads up, um public speaking really is not my strongest skill, but bear with me cause this is definitely one of my favorite subjects to talk about, so hopefully that'll make it a little better. But um so I'm Melinda Olinger. Um and one of the many hats I love to wear um in my city is the Emergency Planning Coordinator hat. Um I've been with the city for about eighteen years. Um I started out part-time actually with Public Works um as an assistant. And my position's actually been evolving ever since day one, um which I love. Um I became directly involved with emergency management um in about two thousand six-ish. Um and one of my first projects um back then was the um development of emergency kits for all of our city staff um members that they could use at their discretion for um any incidents, whether they're large or small, personal or with the city. Um it was a really, really fun project. Um and we actually still use the kits today, they're still active and we still have um those out. Back kinda to the present, um I'd like to share a few of our pending projects and and upcoming projects that we're working on and are initiating in the future. One constant in our program is our community outreach efforts um with the goal of kinda keeping emergency planning in the forefront of our community's mind. Um cause it's really important but easy to kind of get pushed back um in people's minds when there isn't something going on right now. Um and and also sharing that, you know, knowledge and preparation are definitely the best person, defense against any kind of incident that we might happen, you know, that might happen, large or small. Um we regularly share preparedness suggestions, tips and resources uh in our newsletter, which goes out in our utility bills. Um in addition, we use social media as much as possible um and post periodic um information and timely posts kind of relevant to what's going on at that, you know, date and time. Another project for us um coming up is our debris management program. And this is a big one for us. And we're excited to begin work with Marion County Emergency Management and other agencies um throughout the county and actually Region One for debris management activities following a disaster. For us, identifying potential temporary debris staging um and reduction sites and getting the sites actually approved by DEQ so they're ready to go in the event something happens is gonna be one of our biggest parts um of this project for the city's end. Um and our first meeting is scheduled um on May fourth, so looking forward to that. Um we also have a um ongoing coop, um coop update and agility transfer project. Um agility is a business continuity um program which is provided by City County Insurance um or CIS um for all of their insured agencies, which we happen to be one of. And in the case of a disaster, um again, large or small, agility, agility provides services such as power generators, office space, technology um and phone internet connectivity, uh which in turn gives us the ability to um either continue and or regain um the ability to provide essential services as quickly as possible um following or during an event. And then this is another one, I'm, I'm actually excited about all of the projects, but this is another one I'm really excited about. Um is our Citizen Alert Everbridge Sign Up Project. Several years ago, um actually quite a few years ago, um maybe eight years ago, I think, um the city initiated a Citizen Alert system um through our local nine-one-one center, Metcom. Um and the system, Everbridge, gives us the um multiple ways to reach our community through, you know, not only landlines, but texts, emails and multiple. I mean, they can put in work emails, home emails, um home phone numbers, work phone numbers. And we can reach out with just the basically one effort of, you know, putting a little piece together and then Metcom assists us in getting that sent out to everybody. However, one lesson learned from a semi-recent um community-wide incident about one and a half years ago here in Hubbard uh was that we struggled to actually be able to provide um quick and accurate information to our public. And following the event, we looked at the statistics and determined that actually only about ten percent of our community was currently signed up for the Everbridge system, um which definitely made it a lot more difficult to to put out that quick and efficient and accurate information. Um so kinda using the City of Turner's um success in achieving almost a hundred percent of opt-in for their community following their uh rapid floods that they experienced several years ago. And we kinda use that as an example of uh what can be accomplished. And so we've made our goal for uh this project to be ninety to a hundred percent opt-in for everybody in our community. Notices and reminders will continue to be posted on social media sites, um plus blurbs in our newsletter. And information will continue to be shared with new families and businesses that are just moving into the city. Um that happens when they come in to fill out the forms for utilities. We're also planning to use kind of a hands-on method where we're actually gonna break the city up into grids and go door to door. And we'll either um sit with the people and how, help them go through the process of signing up, which is actually pretty easy. Or we'll actually take the information from them and then we can bring that information back to our office and and put it here. So that way we can get everybody on the same page with that. We're also excited to be planning a tabletop exercise uh for this summer. And also coming up this summer is kind of an unprecedented event, which is um the total solar eclipse. Um so we are definitely have that on our radar. And um it's one of the topics for upcoming risk management meeting on the twenty-fifth and to kinda discuss, you know, how that is gonna affect Hubbard um in what ways. We don't, at this time anyway, we don't have any official events or that are being planned. However, there's always the potential for spontaneous visitors. Uh we also have ninety-nine E, which has a huge amount of traffic that comes back and forth. So we anticipate definitely, you know, heavier traffic coming through. And, you know, most likely there's gonna be people too, not just within our community, but maybe others from other areas that are gonna come into our parks and that kinda stuff to be able to um take part in that solar eclipse event. And then a little further in the future, uh we're gonna begin to um another update on our EOP, our Emergency Operations Plan. And I know I don't have to tell you guys this, but. And I know I don't have to tell you guys this, but emergency management's definitely not just an individual activity, but it's actually more of a team sport in which everyone needs to be involved, starting with the individual and all the way up to the federal government, plus of course, everything in between. Also, emergency management is really never done. So we're always looking ahead and working to keep our program both current and also the best that it can be for our community. That being said, kind of in addition to our amazing city, city team, we're really, really fortunate to have some pretty amazing emergency management partners on our team. And just to kind of mention just a few, Marion County Emergency Management, you know, what can I say about them? They've been with us since the beginning. They're an amazing resource, constant partner and cheerleader for us as we continue to build and improve on our program. They've partnered with us on numerous projects and grants, both for equipment and planning documents. And there's a large list of that where they've partnered with, they're, you know, a great resource on current trainings, happenings and current events in the emergency management world. And they keep agencies connected with each other, you know, not just within our community or with our county, but also with, you know, outside of that, you know, with the state and all of, nationwide even really. They're, and to me, their inclusiveness, professionalism and knowledge is so greatly appreciated and they're always just like to call, an email or even a visit away, just right there for us always. Hubbard Fire District also plays a huge role in our city emergency preparedness efforts and although technically they're actually a separate entity, for emergency operations, we actually come together as one unit and work together, like I said, as one unit. And I had a recent opportunity to participate in a hazmat drill hosted by Hubbard Fire, which besides being a blast, it was just a lot of fun to be out there doing that. It was dark and we had the trucks out there and it was a really, really fun, a fun time. But it was also a great chance to meet and work directly with our response team and also get a chance to kind of share a little bit of information about what not only our Public Works role would be, but also our city role would be in that type of an incident and, and concerns that we would have also, that we would be working with DEQ and EPA, et cetera, on, you know, other things. So Chief Brewer and his team are definitely doing amazing things, both for the fire district and our community. North Marion School District, which is actually where the majority of our Hubbard youth attend school, has also been doing just tremendous work on building their district's program, which of course in turn has a positive impact on our city's program. Superintendent Kaiser participated in the city's earthquake exercise last summer on behalf of the school district and is definitely a wealth of knowledge and resources, which is so greatly appreciated. And thank you to all of you for your involvement and commitment to emergency management for both our community and the county and for coming to Hubbard today. So thank you.
Questions or comments?
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. Just I want to say thank you because your, your comments about starting with the individual, but it builds up to a team. And I know how hard it is as an individual. I'm not sure everybody here has a throw bag in their car and, you know, preparation at home for all those things, but if we can take care of ourselves first, then we'd be able to help other people. And I appreciate all that you do in Marion County's emergency management. And I think Ed Flick's at some conference today or maybe...
Sun River.
Sun River, yeah, he's, yeah, he's in the sun. We're over here.
Actually, it's snowing there.
Oh, good, good, good. So Ed, have fun in the snow, but thank you for, you know, it's just one of those things that we, we take for granted and it should be safety first. Sometimes out of sight, out of mind, keep reminding us. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
One of my concerns and one that I've brought up with our health department is that we always think about the big earthquake or flood catastrophe problems. And one of the things that I've talked to our health department about is the problem where you get a large outbreak of a communicable disease. And I was wondering whether you have worked on that with our health department? And I, we used to do a lot of that, but I think it's kind of fallen by the wayside. So I'm kind of pushing that and I don't know whether that's happening in your area or not.
That's actually an excellent point and I appreciate that and definitely something that I would like to actually work maybe with the county and the health department and maybe do some type of even an exercise to kind of build and see how would we handle that, you know, not just countywide, but down, you know, drilling down to our individuals' communities and everything. We don't have anything in the, you know, right now in the works, but I love that idea. I think that would be a great thing, so.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Seems like you've got Hubbard moving ahead more than I've heard from other communities. You said you didn't want to speak when I...
I didn't want to present.
Well, you're, you're there now, Krista.
That wasn't mistaken.
I always have to add something, so, thank you, I guess. I am Krista Roland Carter with Marion County Emergency Management and I'm actually the liaison for the north cities, so Hubbard is one of mine. And Melinda told me that she was presenting to you guys and she says, "What do they want to know?" When I said, "Everything. I want you to tell them everything that you're doing," because they are doing really good things. Hubbard and Silverton is another one that's really, really huge. I did not ask her to specifically put the coop in there because I know that is first thing on your guys' mind, is the continuity of operations portion. And they do work with their agility to, to get that up and going and make sure they have their coop in place. I'm happy to hear that they're working on their EOP because that's what we're doing also. You guys will be seeing that soon. You'll get to read all probably eight hundred pages of it. I know Commissioner Carlson is our, our editor and she's a very good editor at that. And that will be promulgated by the first of July. So that's when I'm encouraging the cities, especially the northern, the northern county to, to get to work on their EOPs so they can kind of crosswalk with ours. The other thing that I, I'm really going to get working with them on is they had a very active CERT team. But you see this whole list of things that Melinda's working on that she didn't have the time to put into the CERT team and they actually had a North Marion CERT team. I don't know if you knew that or not. So actually Boyd's a train the trainer now, so. So that's another thing that we're going to get working on with them again. And then when she mentioned the door-to-door to get them signed up for the Everbridge, the Citizens Alert, I thought, wow, what a, what a...
Good opportunity.
What a great opportunity for the volunteers to go out and, and wear their CERT gear and, and kind of explain it to the, to the community as they're getting them signed up for that. So those are just a few things I'm going to tell you.
Thank you.
No questions?
Thank you.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Our next is Boyd Kaiser, Hubbard, North Marion School District Superintendent. Boyd, before you get started, your school and yourself have been mentioned three or four times already, so it's pretty obviously that you make a priority of being involved in your community more than I've heard other places.
Well, you know, it, it was striking me as I was sitting here what a connective tissue this school is to this whole North Marion County area. And I look around the room and I think it's just filled with partners. And I could, I could have any one of these people up here sitting next to me talking about the work that the school district is doing and interacting with this area. So I think you're absolutely right. There's a lot of small-town America exists right here in northern Marion County and it takes the entire village and northern part of this community to raise our children. And we're so fortunate to have the great partners that we had. And I just want to thank the Carl Memorial folks. What a beautiful little spot that is. You guys did tremendous work. Love going there on Veterans Day and seeing it all. I think about Lindsay from the Woodburn Independent. She's a great cheerleader for our schools, but she's also great at holding, holding us accountable. And we just know that she's going to be there and she's going to ask the tough questions and present the information fairly. And I, I think about my volunteer extraordinaire, Angie Wheatcroft, has been in our schools and helping with our kids in reading and math programs. And, you know, I put her on one of our newsletters as somebody to just be thankful for, the kind of people that show up every day at our schools. I think about Officer Lad and the work that he has done with us. We were looking around about how to put safety and security in our schools and how do we, do we bring a school resource officer or do we train somebody inside our own program? And do we arm them or not? We had community discussions about what's the appropriate level of security in schools. You want to keep that family feel, but you also want to have the kids be safe. And so we worked out this great compromise. We were very innovative and Marion County Sheriff's Office helped train Caleb Barnes, our security officer, to a level that we felt like he could be armed on our campus. And I could just go on, Krista Barnes has been great, Roland, I'm sorry, Krista has been great in training for me personally, including us in the process. We think North Marion School District is the best example of a prepared school district for emergencies and disasters in the state. In fact, tomorrow I go down to a statewide conference to present on how to prepare schools for emergencies and disaster response. And I've got another training that I'm presenting in two weeks from now for school superintendents in the mid Willamette Valley region. So all of that work was predicated upon the good support that came out of the emergency management team of Marion County. I've really enjoyed my association there. So you're absolutely right. The school district is that connective tissue and we feel like we've been supported by everybody in this room. So I'm going to start here. First of all, my name is Boyd Kaiser. I'm superintendent of the North Marion School District and I bring greetings from the home of the Huskies, two thousand students, two hundred and twenty staff members. We serve the communities of Aurora, Donald, Hubbard, Broad Acres and Butteville. And it is a wonderful, unique setting. Fifty-five acres, now we just added fifteen, so we're up to seventy acres that sit in the most beautiful farmland in the Willamette Valley. We are equidistant from Donald, Hubbard and Aurora, sit right in the middle of it. And it is a interesting dilemma. It is both a perfect setting and it also removes us a little bit from our communities. And I'll talk about the history of the schools in a little bit and the decisions that we made to have a unified campus. First of all, I want to say as a former civics teacher in high school and economics teacher, I want to thank the commissioners for coming and taking government to the people. It would be easy for you to sit in Salem and say, "If you have business in front of us, come, we meet every month." Instead, you're on the road. And I know that's difficult, putting together board meetings every month. I know how challenging it is to do. To take it on the road is doubly tough. So not only kudos to you, but Lisa and the staff for all the extra work that it takes...
They do, they do.
Right? To go on the road, so job well done. Before I get started with the remarks that I have prepared, I do want to read them so I don't get too long-winded in, in front of you. I also want to thank the city of Hubbard for sponsoring this. They've been great partners. I want to say, thank the city of Aurora. Bill Graup is not only mayor of Aurora, but he's also on our board. He's also been a very active volunteer and energized our FBLA and Career and Technical Education Program. I want to thank the people of Donald. We've always been a part of the Donald Hazel Net Festival and they've been great partners. Our National Arts Society has gone in and done murals at their city parks. So if you're ever driving, driving through Donald, take a look at all of the artwork that is up there. So we've appreciated that partnership. And also, Melinda, we look forward to expanding the work with emergency planning in North Marion County. I am a trainer for CERT, so I think that my role after I retire will be to help develop some of the emergency management response protocols up here in North Marion County. So look forward to that. So there is both exciting and challenging news currently from North Marion School District. And let me start with some of the challenging ones and then we can move some good positive stuff at the end. Like most school districts across the state, North Marion is in the process of doing their budget planning. Despite the fact that Oregon's economy is really running hot right now and that unemployment rates are at an all-time low for the state, we have a $1.5 billion shortfall at the state level. And US county commissioners know that because you have to deal with the effects of it. Well, so do school districts. If we were to take the governor's budget, which is the better of the two that's now in front of the state legislature, we'd be looking at about a $600,000 shortfall for next year, just to roll up current services. If we were to take the Ways and Means Co-Chairs Committee budget, we would be looking at more like $750,000 worth of cuts. For a school district our size, that's significant. So we've got to prepare a budget before we know what the revenue is, right? So we're preparing now, but we won't know what the revenue stream is until probably June or July, much like you. And so we've got to prepare cuts. And right now our cut list looks like an administrator, at least two teachers, $200,000 from our technology budget, $200,000 from our curriculum adoption materials. So science curriculum will be delayed. We're looking at cuts to building budgets, program budgets, compensation, all across the board. And it's really hard to convince our staff when they look around and see how the economy's doing, that we really have those kinds of shortfalls. And to sit at the bargaining table and say, "And all I can offer you is zero percent COLA and a zero percent increase in your insurance," when insurance costs are going through the roof, it, it is a hard, difficult place to be as a school administrator right now. So those are some real challenges. So as people that are influential, I challenge you to be active advocates for schools and local government in your roles in Salem. There is a great article that just came out, I don't know if you're familiar with the magazine Local Focus, that is put out by the League of Oregon Cities. It's a monthly magazine that comes out. Anyway, there's a great article in there and I gave you a copy of it that summarizes the dilemma that Oregon faces. How is it that we can have a hot-running economy and a huge deficit at the same time? It means that our fiscal policies are broken and something needs to be fixed. So they give some suggestions on that. It's a quick read, it's your homework assignment, you're not going to be tested on it, but it's a good one for you. So on some more cheery note, news, I would say that one of the most exciting things happening in the North Marion School District is a new building bond. North Marion was developed in the nineteen forties after World War II. Some local farmers got together and said, "You know, we need our own high school." At that time, we had elementary schools in each of the small communities. So Butteville had a school, Hubbard had a school, Aurora had a school, Donald had a school, all independent K-8 districts. But the high schoolers, they went to Woodburn or they went to Newburgh or they went to Canby and they decided, "We want our own school." So they formed a K-12 district and they passed a bond and they built North Marion High School, right there in the middle of all of those communities. About fifteen, sixteen years later, when the bond that they initially passed was about to expire, they decided they were going to bring the elementary schools from the surrounding communities onto that campus. And so we moved from a community-based school district to a centralized school district. And the elementary school was built in the mid-sixties. About twenty years later, when the bond's ready to expire again, they built a middle school. So now we have a K-12 campus that sits on fifty-five acres. Twenty years after that, in the year 2000, they built a primary school. So we've had this chapter-by-chapter growth of a school district. And traditions have been developed and it has become, I think, a model school district in many ways. Now here we are with the last building bond passed in nineteen ninety-eight, about ready to expire. And so we're in the next phase. The next phase is to go back to that old high school that was built in the forties and say, "It needs an update." And it does. The roof, the HVAC systems, the floors, the walls, everything, electrical components, we need new spaces there. And we are overcrowding. We are out of space and we are growing. So we're going to put in front, we, we gathered a long-range facility planning team. They met for about a year and a half. They developed a twenty-year vision for that campus. Part of that vision was expanding the campus because we're too confined. We were able to purchase two pieces of land on either side of the middle school on Grim Road that added fifteen acres. So we went from fifty-five acres to the seventy acres now. But there was a problem. We found out in the process of purchasing that land that because that land is, even though it's adjacent to schools and in the past, as long as it was adjacent, you could purchase that land for your expansion. But a rule had been passed in the legislature that said, "Because you're out in the country, we want you to put your schools in cities." And so you can't expand into exclusive farm-use land. And we were going, "Wait a minute, we just had gone through negotiations, we had just ready to sign." We, all, everybody that we had talked to had said, "No, the rules are as long as it's adjacent, you get to buy the land." And so we had to put a halt on it the day before we were going to sign the paper and really start a conversation with the land use planners about can we in fact use this land for school use? North Marion is unique. We live outside of any UGBs. We don't have land... We don't have land in any UGBs. There isn't land set aside with any of the cities for school expansion in their UGBs. So, do we all of a sudden disband North Marion School District and its concept of a centralized school because we're out of room and now have to go and grab land out of the UGBs in the individual cities and reconstitute ourselves over the years in each space as we want, as we try to expand? It's just not practical. It's not sensible. It goes against everything that we're trying to do. And because there are very few school districts that are in our same situation, we were faced with rules that governed different entities and didn't apply to us. So, how do you avoid the cookie-cutter, one-size-fits-all land use planning rules that really don't apply to our school district? So, we've been working with the county planners. Bill has been working with the state legislature to get some legislative relief and some changes in the laws. And I will tell you, I so much appreciate the staff that you have at the county. They have been very helpful. Joe Fenimore has been fantastic, identifying what the problems are, identifying potential solutions to the problem and working it. And we have been working it and working it and working, and we're not quite done yet, but we think we've found some solutions. Right now, the growth into those two properties that we have purchased will not have buildings on them. They will have ball fields and parking lots. So, we don't have to get a change-of-use exemption at this point for that. If we wanted to put buildings on them, though, in the future, we would have to come back and face those current restrictions that are in place. So, we're looking to change some of those restrictions and we hope that we have your support around that. So, that's been some of the challenge with the bond. But the bond that we're asking for, 42.2 million, and by the way, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee identified $72 million worth of needs to get to that 20-year vision. That was just too big for our voters. We wanted to stay with the same tax rate that the voters approved when the 2000 bond passed. That's $1.99 per thousand dollars of assessed value. So, to be able to keep that rate that voters had already approved in 2000, 42 and a half million was all that we could put in front of them. So, that's what the bond is going to be and it scaled down the project quite a bit. There's going to have to be several phases to this bond as time goes on. You do have a brochure in front of you that talks about the bond. It's got some great FAQs on the back to answer some questions. The thing we're most excited about, as you can see on the map, is a rebuild really of all of the classroom spaces at North Marion High School, a modernization of that building. Not sure if you're aware of it, but we have open enrollment rules now in the state of Oregon that say people can go wherever they want. So, for us, all of our patrons are commuters to us. They don't walk down the road in Hubbard to our school. They get in a bus or they get in a car and they drive to our school. It's as close from Hubbard to go to Woodburn High School as it is North Marion High School. It's as close from Aurora to go to Canby High School as it is to North Marion High School. It's as close to St. Paul or Newburgh for those folks out in Donald as it is to coming to North Marion. So, what's compelling them to come to North Marion? We've got to be competitive. We've got to have great programs and we do. But our buildings don't reflect the great work that we're doing. They look a little shabby. They look like they were built in the 1940s. And so, it's imperative that we upgrade, partly from a competitive standpoint and that people don't decide and judge a book by its cover and say, "I'm going to go somewhere else." And partly because we need to expand opportunities for kids. Our Career and Technical Education Program at our high school is really a bright spot for us, but the facilities really restrict it. So, there's a huge investment in career and technical education in this bond as well. So, we're excited about that. It goes in front of the voters in November. We are hopeful for a positive outcome. We're going to need all of our partners in this room. I will say some of the extra money in there goes for other buildings as well. We're putting new roofs on every building, putting new HVAC, heating and cooling systems in every building. All of our parking lots need to be resurfaced. That infrastructure is a result of lack of funding on an annualized basis. You end up delaying maintenance, as you guys all know, in your budgets to do the core work. And that has built up over time. And so, now we're paying for it and we've got to get a big lump of money to try to get those repairs in. So, that's what I wanted to present to you. The last, quick thing is I am retiring at the end of the year this year. It's been six great years. The end of 35 years as a school administrator, have been a high school principal and a school superintendent, as well as a high school social studies teacher and coach. I have loved my work here at North Marion. I think it's been transformative. We've come a long ways in the six years that I've been here. One of the areas I'm most proud of is how safe our schools are. Every day, the members of these communities turn over their most precious resource to us and say, "Care for them. Love them. Nourish them. Support them." And that's what we do and we're very proud of that. So, we wish our new superintendent good luck. Her name is Ginger Redlinger. And I put some information about contacts, so if you want to send her a congratulations and good luck note, you've got her new email address that's at school and we're already starting the process of moving you. And I just wanted to say to everybody in the room, I've appreciated your partnerships and all of your support during my tenure here. Thank you very much. So, open for questions.
Yes.
Thank you for all the information. It was great to hear about it. So, just curious, do you happen to know the bill number of that land use bill or could you get it to us?
Well, sadly to say, Senator Denbrow never acted on it, so it died in committee on Friday. And I called and had a loud conversation with our Senator Gerard. It's tough and that's where it stands.
Mr. Sher, Bill, let's chat either on the phone or off the side because we may be able to... Nothing's dead until the Senate. After spending nine and a half years there, I know.
My last comment, thank you for all you've done.
It was 168. It was a lot.
Hate to see everybody I liked now is leaving. It's a news trip. But I don't know, you probably know Rudy Angie's comments about growth in this community and I know, actually, all Marion County communities are suddenly growing. It's an issue we're facing. So, it must make it even more timely and pressing to be able to have the facilities that you need.
Yes, absolutely. You know, the river has been kind of a block for that urban growth out of the metro area, but it's not going to block much longer. The home prices are just too high up in Plaquemines and Washington County and we're going to see people starting to jump the shark, if you would, and come down into our counties and really start to see the development, I think, over the next few years. And that's why all the planning that cities are going through with their urban growth boundaries and really trying to be thoughtful about utility development and all those kinds of things are so important because we are going to see it. I will say, May 10th, we are going to have an open house at 2:30 to 8:30 and it's going to be a sneak preview to see the school design and to give some feedback. So, if you want a chance to really interact with North Marion County voters, here's a great opportunity to come in and you can just come in for however long you want. There's no set presentations. Tables are set up. We're inviting all of our parents and all of our community members. We just sent out our newsletter this week that we'll personally invite them to come and see what's going on. So, cordially invite you to attend as well.
What's the date again?
May 10th. May 10th. At the high school conference.
All right.
Mr. Sher. Yes, go ahead.
I've been listening to the comments about revenues and expenditures and I've read the article that you referred to. It's particularly difficult for school districts because the Measures 5 and 50 essentially took the schools off the property tax and gave them to the income taxes at the state level. So, the state now really rules the roost. And I noticed in their article about the need to change some of the Measure 5 and 50. I don't know how politically that's going to get done because I know that there are several legislators that have been talking about it, but talk seems to be cheap and nothing happens. We, on the other hand, are doing fairly well because of the development in Marion County. We're not seeing those kinds of problems that school districts are. You raise more property taxes, you get less state funding. So, it doesn't do schools a lot of good. That probably needs to be changed somehow. But I, as county administrator, have been using those increases in funds to fix our infrastructure and do our deferred maintenance rather than building program because I worry that the next recession is going to hit us and then we won't have anything. So, I thank you for your comments. They're very prescient in what we all have to face in the future in funding public services.
All right. The last person signed up to speak is Dan Olven from Olven Companies. Dan? I was trying to look through what you sent. We just got it here this morning.
Yeah.
Lots of different subjects.
Yeah, so, Dan Olven, the Olven Companies. We're a family-owned business located here in Hubbard, located four industrial lots here on the south part of town and then another location out east. So, family-owned company, four main operating companies. And I'll walk through the slide deck a little bit with you and try to keep it short and then be able to answer any questions that you may have as well. The first slide deck, really just our value proposition, being an industrial manufacturing company, how we compete with companies around the country is by putting together larger engineered projects and programs than our competitors do, in essence, is our value proposition. Our history, so started in 1971 with my mother and father, one part-time employee. Mom had about $3,000 in savings and they pushed it all forward and that's how we got our start. Little shop in Malala, 1971, relocated to Hubbard in 73. So, first year sales of about $12,000, just trying to keep the doors open. So, and at that point, it was 100% in the logging industry. So, and at that point, from Vancouver, B.C. down to Northern California, probably 60, 70 other forge shops, lots of big guys. So, having to take on the hard-to-do work, the repair work that no one else wanted to do. So, kind of the following 40-plus years, once they got their feet really established and under them, really looked to diversify into additional markets outside of logging, so construction, maritime, add some of that diversity and added, so the customer base, industries, and capabilities to what we were offering. And then just some of those core values, staying true to the customers, the employees working to maintain a US-based manufacturing company and really creating those local jobs as well and being a part of the community. And being a part of the community and local ties is a very important part of our business. Just, you know, one of the stories when my father started back in the early '70s, PMTS, a family-owned steel supply center in Portland, they would let him come in after hours, back up his pickup truck to the saw and load up remnants, you know, kind of after hours. And over the last couple of years, we're typically either number one or in their top five customer base. And so, those are those long-term relationships and ties to, you know, again, communities that we like to have. Some of the benefits, you know, again, just talked to, being located where we're at, the level of talent and expertise that we need in metalworking, manufacturing. You have to have competitive wages, but we also provide full benefits packages, 401K to all of our employees. The health and wellness within the workplace, really how it contributes to the health of the community and their families. So, currently, you know, we provide healthcare, medical, dental, vision, life insurance, long-term disability, accidental death and dismemberment. And this year, we're actually looking at making a change from short-term disability from being voluntary to having that as an employer-paid benefit as well. So, having these real strong benefits programs allows us to provide great working jobs as well as just a great benefits package to the employee base. And so, we're about 140 employees and provide these benefits to, you know, roughly 320 individuals. And that's with a very, very small co-pay. So, kind of the, one of the exceptions, I think, in the industry. Little bit of growth chart since the early '70s. You know, we've grown organically and through acquisition, acquiring companies from Georgia, Texas, and around the country that really add to, you know, our core capabilities and competencies that allow us to position ourselves differently in the marketplace as well. So, it is a combination, organic and through M&amp;A activity. Snapshot of some of the industries that we serve here out of Hubbard, aerospace, maritime, so towing industry, some of the offshore construction programs, oil and gas energy markets from offshore, topside, subsea applications to all of the land-based energy markets as well, food processing, infrastructure, recreational, so a very, very diversified industry, you know, group today versus how we got our start back in just the logging industry, which allows us to weather a lot of the economic ups and downs, which the last two years, our industry, it's probably the hardest-hit recession, probably in about 65 years and lost a lot of foundries, a lot of forge shops, a lot of heavy industry. So, through this last downturn. On the forging side, we're not one of the largest forge shops, one of the most diverse in capabilities and product lines. So, from, if you haven't pictured Little Leatherman forged jaw to a 2,000-pound top-dry bale in, you know, the offshore oil and gas markets. Ferris and non-ferris materials, so very, very diverse skill set capability that we maintain here at our operations on the forging side, as well as a full CNC machine shop as well. The steel foundry side, finish weights up on castings up through about 2,500 pounds, clear down to smaller handheld-sized parts as well. Houston Structures is one of our engineered design service companies. So, if you're at a Mariners game and the retractable roof is opening and closing, it's all of our cable assemblies and end termination fittings that are helping hold up that roof structure. So, all produced here in Hubbard. And these projects are everything from the inland waterway navigation systems for all of the Corps of Engineer projects, Columbia, Snake, all of the Midwest rivers. We supply all of the cable assemblies, a lot of the termination fittings for all of those projects and components, railroad lift bridges, small pedestrian bridges as well. The next page would show one of the major programs that we're working right now, which is the Sixth Street Biaduct Replacement Program downtown city of Los Angeles, about a $420 million program. We've got some verbals on that, but that would bring into, you know, Hubbard into our company about a, just under a $4 million contract for supplies and services. And so, in those types of programs, those big projects, we also work to really have a defined supply chain as well. So, companies like GK Machine, you know, historically is a very important partner for us when we go out and bid these larger programs and projects. Our skookum company, we acquired in 1986, one of the old Northwest companies. So, it was founded in 1890, skookum being a Chinook Indian term, meaning big and strong. And so, back in the late 1800s, they would take the wood shell logging blocks off of the boats, try to use them in the timber industry, and they weren't being very successful doing that. They would take them then to a small machine shop called Columbia Iron Works and ask them to put metal straps and plates on them or to make them skookum. And so, then eventually, that company transpired into skookum, producing metal blocks for forestry industry and maritime construction markets as well. We picked that up in 1986 out of Portland and relocated that down to Hubbard as well. So, and that is our branded product line, sold through distribution around the world. So, consistently selling product into Europe, into the Middle East, down into Southeast Asia as well. Today, our largest logging account is in New Zealand, so. Some of the industry served, so mining, so everything from all types of mining, so from underground to tar sands, some of the coal mines and different types of products, everything from the big, major dragline buckets to underground rock tools as well. Energy markets, again, so offshore market in the energy, so from the topside platforms to all of the subsea connectors, termination fittings, components there, to the land-based markets as well. Recreational markets, if anyone golfs and has heard of Scotty Cameron, we actually forge all of the-
That's going to get your attention.
Scotty Cameron putters, yeah, which is a titleist brand. So, all of the new golf putters that they're putting out, we forge here in Hubbard. If you snow ski, snowboard and you're riding the chairlift, most of the times on a Doppelmeyer, Garventa, C-Track chairlift system, it's all of our castings that are holding you on to the main cable assembly. Firearms, we do a lot of small firearms components as well, as well as a lot of work for companies like Benchmade Knives here in Oregon City as well. Some of the military parts and components, a lot of suspension chassis components. Major provider to companies like Oshkosh Truck, BAE, DRS, supplying all of their production line vehicle programs. So, tracked and wheeled vehicle platforms. Heavy trucking industry as well. So, if you see FedEx going down the road, you know, dual pintle or single pintle trailer hitch assemblies, you know, we're supplying a lot of the major components that create those hitch systems. The truck and auto components, everything. We had Daimler Freightliner down here within the last week. About eight or 10 of their program managers and engineers touring all of our facilities, working with them on some new programs as well for some of their commercial vehicles. Infrastructure program is a new area for us within the last couple of years. So, some of the mass transit programs around the country. We developed and produced about 35 new parts which go on the Honolulu and Miami mass transit train systems. Another one that we're working right now is with Alstom Rail, which is a French company. They received about a $2.4 billion program for the new high-speed Amtrak train system up in the mega quad cities in the Northeast. We're working with them, have their final audit here in May, but to supply all of the inter-car coupling systems and key chassis components for those high-speed train systems. Aerospace, so Rockwell up in Wilsonville, the major campus up there. We supply Rockwell, really since the mid 80s, all of the hardware components that the optics and electronics go into for their heads-up navigation system. So, there's a new 737 MAX program, comes online, pilot, copilot, zero-visibility flip-down system for the pilots. We supply all of the hardware components that will hold the glass into those. So, we do all of that here in Hubbard. And have recently just re-upped a couple multi-year contracts with them as well. And in that, we had built out our aerospace division and got our AS 9100 certification as well here in the industrial lot on the south side of town. In essence, what we do is try to be there for our customers, to be that engineering, design, service provider in, for manufacturability, cost and design for our customers and industry. Using a lot of flow simulation software, so not only do we need the, you know, that skilled labor on the shop floor, we also employ the latest talent and skill set to run actual simulation software for the foundry, for the Ford shop as well. So, utilizing, you know, all the tools that are out there. And so, work closely with Oregon State, part of their MEcop program, work with Shemekada as well to ensure, you know, that we're able to get that right talent that we need on the workforce. Heart of our business really is the forging, the casting, the fabrication, that turnkey value-add service to our customers. Next 40 years, you know, again, just continue our growth into existing, in some of the new markets, continuing to drive new technologies and kind of that material science into our industries and our products that we're providing out there. Continuing to invest back into our business, the employees. And one of the biggest challenges, keeping that entrepreneurial spirit that, you know, started in 1971 and carry us through as we're really professionalizing the business. So, we have the process, the systems, those foundation blocks that allow us to support the work like Alstom on the Amtrak programs, the companies like Rockwell Collins that require where you're moving people, mass people on these transportation systems. So, and then, again, just remaining committed to the customers and the employee base. So, that's a quick overview of who we are and what we're doing.
Mr. Cameron, I was wanting a new golf putter. I see lots of notes over there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually got to spend some time, this was about a year ago, right?
Yeah.
And I came up and toured their facility and was impressed where my putters were being made, right next to the airline stuff in the same room. And I know you were getting ready to make some changes, but pretty interesting tour. And I think you got some help from Clackamas and expanding the Clackamas side, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, great operation. And I share the story, I mean, I can't share it like he does, but I tell people all the time, you know, a little place like Hubbard, which what I'm so impressed with was the volunteer base that's here, the community base that's here, the lifelong people that have been here, a lifelong business that is shipping parts all around the world from, you know, and we have many stories like this, not just Olven Companies, but, you know, you go out into some of our EFU lands where, well, GK Machines you mentioned and where they're shipping stuff. And Stefan Systems that Nick took me out to, to see their A presses and, you know, they've got a world map there. It's amazing the things that people don't know that are happening right here in Marion County and in small cities. And we want to figure out how we can help make sure you're successful. And not only, you know, from a county standpoint, but we can go into the state and try to help with things that you need to be successful. Like, don't get me started on all the labor stuff. Business guy, but thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, and, yeah, just with Sedcor also, proud member of the Board of Directors now. And Sedcor's done some really great work, you know, not only for us, but, you know, within the community and, you know, proud to be serving on that board as well.
We've got lunch this afternoon.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess we've got a pretty good picture of a vibrant, active and caring community. What I'd like to do, though, is take a little, let's take a 10-minute break to thank people for coming. And let's be honest, there's a maple bar with my name. So, let's reconvene, we'll start with a normal business meeting at 10 to 11. All right, we're back and we're in Hubbard for continuation of our Board of Commissioners meeting. During the break we had, I spoke to someone who said he would like to speak. And I'd like to invite him up now, Robert Carney, a councilman from Woodburn, if you'd like to.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brentano and the other commissioners and the aides, thank you very much. This is the, this is actually the first official meeting I've attended, so I was uncertain of what the protocol was. I very much wanted to join my civic colleagues and make a presentation on Woodburn. However, I was a little hesitant, but I'm pleased now to be able to speak to you. I'm in the second year of my first term as Woodburn City Councilor. And my ward is Ward Three. And Ward Three is adjacent to the southern end of Hubbard, so we adjoining one another. And of course, you know, I'm one of six councilors and the mayor. Our mayor happens to be on vacation this month and although I'm sure she would love to be able to be here to make this presentation, I'm pleased to be able to do it myself. We've had a lot of challenges over the course of the last two years while I've been on the council. And the greatest of that was probably the successful negotiation of our urban growth boundary. And I'm sure you're aware of the general information about that. But solving that problem was one of my campaign issues. And that was the, that was the crux of the campaign that I made in order to run for Woodburn City Council. I wish to be able to add whatever intellect I possibly could to that challenge. I was successfully able to join the negotiating team and after a 21-year, very, very difficult struggle, we ultimately were able to prevail by having a very symbiotic and harmonious negotiation with the adversaries, the traditional adversaries of the last 20 years. And we now have approximately 110 acres of industrial land that we've, we're about to bring in to the city of Woodburn through the normal processes. And we're actively looking for industries out there that can help support us. Of course, our preference is three-shift industries. It'll put 2,500 people to work if at all possible. And, but it's private land, so we're really not too sure how much influence we can have on that. So, that's a good success. The two challenges that are facing us these days are ones that all of us are very familiar with. And that's the future toll that's going to be taken on our finances regarding the purse commitment that we've all made over the past years. Putting aside the funds to be able to deal with that is, frankly, it's a quarterly challenge. It's something we have to look at all the time as part of our financial acumen when we deal with our own financial support internally and when we have to look at our, when we have to look at our potential tax revenues. So, that's an ongoing challenge. But at the last council meeting, we finally dealt with one issue that we've been toying with for the past six or eight years. As you know, the city of Woodburn put a significant amount of funding into the development of Front Street, which runs parallel to the Southern Pacific railroad tracks. It was a very good project. It revitalized Front Street and it opened a number of businesses along Front Street that are now thriving. And it encouraged people to come down because it became a very attractive street. It encouraged people to come down in the evenings and to really enjoy the amenities that Front Street offered. But once Front Street was developed, it was immediate contrast to First Street, which is the parallel street that runs just west of that, and then the alleyways in between. What it did was it really, it made the city understand that there was more to downtown than just Front Street, that we really had to do something with First Street. But alas, funding was always the issue. So, for the past two years, we've been trying to deal with the whole issue of how to fund Front Street, uh, First Street. And we got a new finance director who offered us a lot of positive input and has been working steadily on a solution to the problem. And at the last council meeting, after assessing our potential tax revenues, we realized that we're now in a position to be able to perhaps borrow the funding that's necessary or bond, whatever is necessary. A First Street project, which will be in the neighborhood of $4.5 to $6 million. And the difference between the $4.5 to the $6 million is relative to the city utilities, the electrical utilities, whether or not they be overhead or underground. But our vision is to be able to take First Street from our aquatic center all the way up to the street, all the way up to Harrison, and be able to redevelop it completely, repave it and widen the sidewalks, have different parking arrangements, and to also take the existing parking lot that's currently pretty badly served, which is behind the post office, and turn that into a genuine city parking lot. And then, what we can do is we can invite people to park there, walk in a pedestrian-friendly environment along First Street, and then encourage businesses to be able to relocate there or locate there, change their frontage, change their business environments, and generally take advantage of a pedestrian-friendly environment along First Street. And when that project is completed, I believe that what we're going to be able to do is actually offer each independent business owner along there a multi-thousand-dollar gift to be able to redevelop their business and see a different opportunity for commercial development there. And just in closing, I'll just say that we couldn't have done any of this unless we had the opportunity to rid ourselves of the albatross we've been carrying since the 90s, and that's the Association Building downtown. And we had to, we had to shed ourselves of the Association Building in order to put ourselves in a position to add genuine development downtown. So, we embarked two years ago on a very active effort to recruit a new owner and new businesses for the Association Building. And I'm pleased to say that we were successful. Approximately a year ago, the Association Building has been sold. It's the core of, it's on the core of downtown. It stretches between Front Street and the plaza in downtown. And the new owners, who are two developers from Portland, have begun redeveloping the inside of the building. And what they're going to do is they're going to have a very, very, a very commercially friendly environment inside the Association Building, which is going to be composed of a number of small businesses. And then upstairs, we're going to have the ability to be able to rent out a hall for things like weddings, bar mitzvahs, who knows? And we're looking forward to that also generating some enthusiasm for the evening crowd and the afternoon, frankly, the all-day crowd down there. And the Association Building, now that it's sold, is actually going to be a commercial linkage between the existing Front Street, the plaza, and if we develop First Street, to have this whole harmonious group along with the development of the alleys. I'm very, very pleased to have worked with my colleagues on the council, our staff, and I'm pleased to see the commitment that they have brought to this process. And even though this is my first opportunity to serve in public office, I found that the challenge is very welcoming because the quality of the people that I've discovered that I can work with have given me the opportunity to really enjoy what I have, the task I've taken on. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with you and your commission and to watch how you exercise the civic professionalism that I did not have in my background, but I'm learning on a day-to-day basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, we have lunch monthly downtown and have watched the changes and the upgrades. I actually spent a lot of time as a youngster, to name every store probably doesn't matter. But if you, I really hope you can make that entire section upgraded new and kind of become a destination. And I think it would be. I know what First Street looks like now, I know what it looked like in the 60s and 70s. And I'd love to see it get new life.
Thank you, Commissioner Brentano. We hope the same. And thank you very much for your support.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. All right. We have one action item a day and I'm going to make them wait just a little bit longer. I've already been reprimanded, so I might as well take the heat. And I'm sorry for making sense along, but perhaps you learned like we did what's special about Hubbard, so.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion on consent calendar. I'll move the consent calendar. First item is under Health, approve an order of reappointing Mathilda Bar- First item is under health, approve an order of reappointing Mathilda Barrario, Deborah Girard, Jeff Peterbaugh, Daryl Thomas, and appointing DC Ceneros to the local alcohol and drug planning committee with terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And if I messed up any of those-
I think you messed up most of them.
Well, they all blended together, so, at least they're written down in the appropriate way. Public Works, uh, scheduling a public hearing to consider mass gathering, MG case number seventeen dash zero zero one, Sonin Clerk's file number five seven two two for May third, two thousand and seventeen. Also under Public Works group, the contract for services with Knife River Corporation for four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for the widening of eastbound right turn lane on Silverton Road between Corden and Larden Road.
I'll second the motion.
All right, if we move second, approve the consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, thank you. Uh, one action on my item, as I mentioned, is under business services. We consider recommendations from the two thousand and seventeen Marion County Compensation Board. Amy Rose Fish, Joshua Graves, who's our Marion County Compensation Board Chair. So, once again, I apologize. Could have put you first. Look what you did miss.
It was very helpful, actually.
Go ahead, Amy Rose.
Well, uh, thank you, commissioners. As you mentioned, I'm Amy Rose Fish, the Human Resource Manager for Marion County, and, um, under the ORS two zero four point one one two, we are required to have a compensation board that ma- is made up of three to five volunteers in our community within Marion County that either do business or live in Marion County to provide and review the annual compensation, um, recommendations for our elected officials. And so, we have five members this year that participated, and they, uh, draft guidelines, um, and adopt guidelines to follow, uh, for each year, and as well as identify the market. They, this year, as in the years past, have, uh, taken the recommendations of our legal counsel and our compensation study that we did back in two thousand and fifteen to follow the market comparables that we use for our workforce at Marion County, which are similarly situated, uh, counties, um, some that are higher, um, bigger, and some that are smaller than us. So, the four that we use currently are Clackamas County, Lane, Deschutes, and Jackson. And so, with that, we also, um, usually look at two things. We look at the market of each elected official as well as cost of living, and then they make decisions on that. And so, with that, I will, um, turn it over to the chair this year, Josh, Joshua Graves, and he'll share the recommendations.
Thank you. Good morning. For good for the record, Josh Graves, Chair, current Chair of the Marion County Compensation Board. So, in my presentation to you this morning, I'm going to talk about the two forms of compensation that the Compensation Board is recommending to the Board of Commissioners. One is the market review adjustment on salary, and then the other is the cost of living increase, or the COLA. So, as we look at the, at the elected officials' positions, for the justice of peace, sheriff and treasurer, we are recommending no change in salary. For the, for the elected officials of assessor and county clerk, we are recommending an additional one point five percent total salary increase. For the elected Board of Commissioners, we are looking at, we would recommend, an additional four percent total salary increase, and for the district attorney, an additional one percent total salary increase. Secondly, in regard to the cost of living or the COLA, we recommend a one percent COLA in alignment with non-represented employees for all Marion County elected officials effective July first, two thousand and seventeen.
All right, questions or comments?
I have a question, if you may.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just curious, on the assessor and county clerk, uh, they're three point four and three point oh six below market, right?
Correct.
According to the survey, uh, raising them one point five percent. Commissioners, four point six percent below market, raising them, um, raising them four percent. Why the difference in the, um, raising?
The percentage.
Percentage. What was the rationale behind that? Do we know? Go ahead.
In the, uh, you mean, why one got four percent and one got one point five? The base of when we-
Right, because they would still, excuse me, Mr. Chair, so, sorry to be rude. So, they would still be one and a half percent, approximately one and a half percent, or maybe one point nine percent below market. Commissioners would be six tenths below market.
So, when we, when they looked at it, they really had a, a pretty, uh, good lengthy discussion on this matter, and they wanted to get all the elected officials close to the mean, but they also didn't bring them up to the mean, meaning the zero percent, um, because they wanted to be very good stewards for the citizens of Marion County. And so, they were really balancing that. The reason why the commissioners is four percent total salary, and the county clerk and the, um, assessor are one point five, is because the commissioners were the furthest out when, in review of their, um, compensation comparatively to all the other elected officials this year.
So, can I add, tag on, because that was my question when I was reading it. I thought that the compensation study said that we were going to bring everyone as close to the mean as possible. We weren't going to do the minus five percent type of a thing anymore, and yet, even after the one percent, almost everyone, other than the two kind of outliers, are still, so you just subtract another one percent from your table, right? So, the new salary, if the market recommendations are included, so the assessors minus three point four percent, so if you add another one percent COLA, because that's what would be added, then it's at minus two point four, minus two point oh six, minus three point six, and minus one point eight six. So, we didn't really follow that parameter for elected officials, I'm wondering why?
Well, they, they did look at wanting to come close to the mean, but the committee agreed that, um, came to a decision that they were comfortable with, uh, the two to three percent below. They were not doing the five and five, you're correct, and we talked them through what the compensation study, um, had reviewed, um, but they, they actually, um, you know, it's, it's a voted membership, so there was a two to three split on a lot of our votes, and so the, the discussion went back and forth, and what they agreed on, what they, the committee was comfortable with, was, uh, the two, right around that two, three percent out. They did have a little bit more, again, on the, on the one, um, because of how far they were out.
Okay. And then the other question that I had is, I think this, I understand it, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. With elected officials, there's no range, salary range, right?
Correct.
Because there's just a salary. So, you're not trying to find the closest parameter to the five percent like you are when you're looking in the compensation system?
Correct.
You just lift those salaries up to the amount that the Compensation Board says it is. So, you're really not trying to match it to anything in the compensation system? Am I getting that right?
Correct. Yeah, there's not a pay scale or anything-
Right.
-that we're trying to match it to.
Right.
So, when we do it in the county, we say closest within the pay range. It may be zero, but it may be one percent above, one percent below, two percent. We try to stay still within that five to five, of course, but there may be a one percent, two percent above, below, depending on what pay grade is the next closest-
Right.
-to the mean, yeah.
But there's no cumbersome administrative thing that would, that would keep it at the two percent or three percent, it's just a, a policy choice of the compensation.
Correct, that, that they chose to do. And they looked at total salary, um, which is, which is in alignment, again, with the, um, compensation study, which is the increases on, based on total salary, looking at the, um, deferred compensation and the purse pickup as well.
Right. So, the numbers that we have here is on total compensation.
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, generally, what we do with this is we thank the Compensation Board for their hard work, and Amy Rose and staff for providing them all of the comparators that you do to prepare for that. Uh, we accept the report, and then we refer it to the Budget Committee, so we're not here today to say yea or nay on it. Uh, we're just here to, to accept the report and then move it forward, and then it will be deliberated when we do the budget with the Budget Committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, I would make the motion, then, Mr. Chair, that the Board refer the County Compensation Board's recommendations to the Marion County Budget Committee.
I'll second.
All right, we have an order that would do just that, so, I think it's still going to be a compromise motion. So, if we move this, yes, John?
Mr. Chair, to remind you that when the Budget Committee makes a determination of the salaries, then you will also have to add those to the budget. Because I don't in my budget make any assumptions-
Assumptions.
-assumptions about what it will be.
All right, the motion has been made, and second to, to accept the recommendation and to refer it to the, uh, Marion County Budget Committee. Any further discussion? I, I just have one, and I don't want you to have to reconvene, but I, I think I'll be looking at that time for something, and we've kind of got near it, that brought up those others, clerk, assessor, just a little bit closer, and, and know what it means budget-wise, at least to be able to consider it, so if you think about that before budget time.
Yeah, we would need to reconvene the committee-
Oh, do you?
-if you would like us to do that to discuss that.
The Budget Committee can do it on their own.
Yeah, it could happen at that level as well.
The staff can prove all this here and there.
Well, John, you could know what it means dollar-wise, too, so, it's probably, I would, that number can't be that big. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I miss what you wanted.
Just to know, uh, a couple of them are a little bit below what I think is where we want to be, this mean. I'd like to be able to discuss it, know what it means dollar-wise.
Which one?
Clerk, assessor, and there may have been, was there another on the list?
Well, the board.
Well, the board goes a little too close, but we can talk about that, too. All right, just, I'm just asking. All right, any, any further questions? Hearing that, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, and thank you, and thank you again. Continuing with us this morning.
It's our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of our action items. Uh, the last thing to do is to leave the places we'll be together in the coming week. Mr. Chair, is there another page after the heads for Thursday? Is that the last?
Definitely.
All right. Here's the place we'll be together, uh, tomorrow morning, seven thirty, uh, the thirteenth of April, we have a Kaiser Marion County meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, forty-nine ninety-eight River Road and Kaiser. At noon, the same day of Boys' Club. Can't you just leave?
Nice exit.
Boys' Club Annual Luncheon, Salem Convention Center, two hundred Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. Thursday evening, six thirty to seven thirty, a meeting with the Jefferson City County Community Forum, Town Hall, I'll be Jefferson City Hall, one fifty North Second Street in Jefferson. Monday, the seventeenth, eight thirty to nine, calendar review, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, five fifty-five Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed in the same location by management update from nine to eleven o'clock. And Monday, the seventeenth, the one thirty to two thirty, one-on-one with elected official District Attorney Walt Beglaw, and that'll be at Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the eighteenth, nine to ten, work session with Marion County Housing Authority, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, five fifty-five Court Street, Northeast in Salem. And then, Wednesday, the nineteenth, our weekly board meeting, that's nine to one, scheduled in Senator Hearing Room, first floor, five fifty-five Court Street, Northeast, and that's followed by the last, I think it's the last of our community forum, Town Hall meetings in Mont Angel. That'll be at noon to one o'clock, the Mont Angel Library Community Room, two ninety East Charles Street in Mont Angel. So, everybody's left, almost, but thank you so much to the Hubbard community for inviting us and, uh, and giving us a good picture of all that goes on here. Very enjoyable and informative. Anything to add?
No, it's a great meeting.
Anything funny to add? I need some.
Something funny. Oh, I don't have that many.
All right, we're just, nothing but serious workers.
Yes.
All right, then with that, let's call this meeting adjourned.